Good evening, I'm calling this town meeting into session. This is the third session of this town meeting, I'll explain that. The first session we had actually on the date printed in your warrant. We were required to hold that session because otherwise town meeting would have dissolved. So we met and adjourned to the town election, which for historical reasons, not worth discussing here, the town election is considered a session of town meeting. So this is actually the third session of this special town meeting. I'd like to start. We have a couple of major articles, but I'd like, if you can, for everyone to stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, if you will. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I'm missing one thing here, Mike, so why don't we go straight to the intro slide? These are the standards for anyone that's been here before. If you haven't, they request no food or beverages here in the auditorium, no smoking on the facility, and we ask you to turn off your cellphones. I'm going to turn mine off, or at least mute it. And, which actually I'm going to do because I need to use mine as a clock. Next slide, please. So my name is David Walrath, I'm the Stowe Town Moderator. We also have, in the gymnasium, Liz Painter, who is the deputy moderator. She was elected at the town meeting. She can stand in for me if I'm busy. Behind me, we have Linda Hathaway, the town clerk, and the assistant town clerk, Kay Desmond. Next slide, please. I'm not going to introduce everyone, but in front of me, we have the board of selectmen with their town, with the town administrator, the selectman's administrative assistant, and our town council. Next slide. Over here on your left, well, when we get to it, over here on your left, we have the finance committee. They're going to, with the exception of no action, they're going to give a recommendation on each article tonight. Next slide. We have some major capital articles, as some of you know, and we have a capital planning committee who's going to give a recommendation on each of the capital articles. Next slide. The planning board may talk on a couple of the street acceptances, but I primarily put this in is that, in case we needed a second night for town meeting, tomorrow night, the planning board moved their lower village public forum, which was printed in the warrant, so I wanted everyone to know that it's been postponed to November 28th. Next slide, please. I'd like to thank all the town meeting volunteers. We have a number of tellers. We're doing a paper ballots tonight, so the tellers have more work than they would normally have. Our audio and visual technical help, we have a couple folks who are interested in helping. Due to the date change, that didn't work out well, so we, but we have Lou Halpern and Jerry Horn, who have put in a huge amount of work getting these microphones and all the audiovisual work, and if we needed it, the overflow space in the gymnasium. If anyone is interested in helping with audiovisual, you could probably talk to either of those folks, or talk to me either after this meeting, or send me an email, or contact me, I'm in the phone book. Are we still looking for tellers?
One.
Oh, we're still looking for one teller. If, if anyone is willing to serve as a teller tonight, we have someone here.
JT.
JT, find Debbie.
No.
Oh, no, Linda can do it right here. So, I think we're okay for tellers, and the volunteers at Stowe TV who are taping this, and they replay it, actually, I believe we're live for the first time. We're doing that as an experiment to see, see if it works well. Next slide, please. So we have some non-voters that are addressing the meeting. Town officials, by town bylaw, always do, but we do typically take a vote. It's a, it's a good way to practice how we vote here. So Bill Wrigley, John Whitman, and the fire chief are not town voters, but they, we generally prefer them to be able to address the meeting. So all in favor of these three individuals addressing the meeting, please raise your yellow cards. All right, I'm going to call, any opposed? I'm going to call that unanimous. Next slide, please.
Mr. Moderator.
One moment.
Okay.
We also have some associates for the capital articles who may be addressing the meeting. The two from the Randall Library Building Committee, I believe, are not here tonight. Is that correct? But I'll, I'll put them all on. Who here supports permitting these consultants to address the meeting tonight? Please raise your cards. Any opposed? I'll call that unanimously in favor.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Burke, 125 Birch Hill, wrote, "I move that Luke Travers, a Boy Scout, not yet 18, but certainly a future Eagle Scout, be allowed to address the town meeting on the question of the Stowe Community Center on behalf of the Boy Scouts."
So I, I didn't, we did not get this in advance of the meeting enough to fill out the normal paperwork, but the meeting itself can permit, so we don't have, for instance, a slide up here, but the meeting itself can permit non-voters to address the meeting, even if, for example, the moderator hasn't arranged for it beforehand. So is there a second to that motion, I should ask? I hear a second. Is there any, is there any debate on this motion to allow another non-voter to address the meeting? Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. All in favor of permitting this non-voter to address. Any opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of allowing that non-voter to, I'm sorry, his name again was, Brian?
Luke Travers.
Luke Travers to address the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I thank the town meeting, too.
Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. All in favor of permitting this non-voter to address. Any opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of allowing that non-voter to, I'm sorry, his name again was, Brian?
Luke Travers.
Luke Travers to address the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I thank the town meeting, too.
So, next slide, please. So a question, this is, this is typical for regular town meeting goers, but for anyone that's new, if you're wondering, around 10:30, the moderator will take a sense of the meeting. If we still have business to do, articles that have not been dealt with, I'll ask if we want to continue on tonight, or if we want to go to a second night. And again, between articles, I'll do that somewhere around 10:30. Next slide, please. For debate, we require respectful debate. That means no clapping, cheering, booing, any, any of that. We're, we're here to hear the issues and to debate the issues, not to make this a popularity contest. You saw Brian Burke, when he came to the, to the microphone, I'll do it here. My name is David Walrath, I live at 30 Samuel Prescott Drive, I'm raising up my card to show that I'm a voter. We remain seated during a vote, particularly during the paper ballot. If you leave the room, you will not be allowed back in until we've collected all of the ballots. So please remember that for the paper ballot. We don't go, I did my, the first town meeting that I did, but unlike some towns, I haven't been going through a lot of the procedural things you can do. I don't have it in front of me, but down in, up in the gymnasium, we have a pile of town meeting handbooks. If you have any interest in understanding some of these, how motions work, amendments, how debate works, more details on, on traditions in Stowe around debate, that book will probably answer all of your questions, so feel free to go out and grab one, if you're a new voter, or if you're just haven't, have a question on it.
They're right outside the door.
Pardon?
They're right outside.
Oh, they're right out, the town clerk told me they're right outside the door here also. Next slide, please. So we start with, aside from non, aside from non-voters, we have a couple procedural motions, so, the selectmen, do we have the first procedural motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereon be waived, but made a part of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter, instead of reading each article in its entirety.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Primary, primary purpose of this motion is it means I don't have to read the, the whole, each article in the warrant. We will make a motion, that will be read, but the idea here is, traditionally, not everyone had a printed warrant in front of them, so the moderator would read it. If you want me to read it, you can vote against it, but will be later, here later tonight. So anyways, all in favor, well, is there any debate, I should ask? All in favor, please raise your cards. Actually, I shouldn't vote. All opposed? I'm going to call that unanimous, in favor of this procedural motion. Sometimes, one or two people may vote against it, and I'll still count it unanimous. That's not to disrespect you. I may not have spotted you, I have new progressive lenses, so my eyesight's starting to go downhill, but, but it's also, it takes seven or more voters to, to object to a vote count by the moderator, and if I can call it by the highest amount that I can, for example, call it unanimously, if I made a mistake in calling, whether it's a majority vote, or a two-thirds vote, or something else, if I can call it unanimous, it, it saves us some trouble down the road. So I may do that occasionally, and again, it's not to disrespect you. Do we have another motion from the selectmen, please? I believe it's the alternative motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the moderator take no vote for the main motion on Articles 1 and 3 until debate has completed on both articles. However, if the moderator determines the debate on both articles will not be complete within the first night of the meeting, a vote shall be taken on those articles that have been completed.
So we have a motion in a second. I made a slide here for what we're attempting to do here. Originally, we had, we were expecting to do all three of the capital articles. Before this meeting, the library building committee decided to move no action, although they will make a short presentation. So, the idea is Articles 1 and 3, we're going to wait until we finish debate on both of them, so you can compare and contrast, if you only, if, for example, you, you feel you can only vote for one, but not for both, you'll get to see the presentations and debate on both. And we'll do the votes for both of those at the end, after, actually, after Article 4, I'm presuming no action, will be a quick vote on, on the other two. So, are there any questions or debate on this motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor. Actually, I shouldn't. All opposed? I will call that unanimous in favor of the motion. So I believe we are ready for a motion under Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $144,600 for the purpose of funding the architectural and engineering services necessary for project design and design development, and complete construction documents for basic building and systems improvement to Pompo Citicut School, in order to meet code compliance in converting the school into a community center, including related administrative expenses, and any other cost incidental or related thereto. That the total cost of the proposed improvements is estimated at the time to be $2,500,000. However, it is acknowledged that this estimate is non-binding and subject to change as a result of project details developed during the design phase.
So we have a motion in a second. Before I ask for a presentation or input, I will note, the number in the motion of $144,600 is different than what is printed in your warrant, and also, it takes out the language relating to passing a two-and-a-half override vote at the ballot. That vote has already passed, so it's not necessary for this particular motion to pass. So, first, I will ask for a recommendation from the finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. The design option allows immediate use of the building, with the portion being fully renovated at a modest cost. The town must take some action with this town-owned building. The alternative to demolish the building would cost about $1 million, which is 40% of the cost to proceed with this plan. The committee feels that it would not be financially prudent to take that alternative. The overall cost of the project of $2.5 million, which would include the design funds in this article, would represent about $53 per year additional tax burden for the average taxpayer. Over the next 20 years, or 25 years, if the subsequent project was not approved within a few years, the $144,600 design funds alone would represent about $8 per year additional tax burden for the average taxpayer over the next five years.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from Capital Planning?
Capital Planning recommends approval of this article. Committee feels it's a fiscally responsible solution to the question of how to best use Pompo in a way that will benefit the interests of a large cross-section of the population of Stowe.
Thank you. Are we ready for the presentation? Do we, all right, before we start, while, while they're getting that set up, I will just say, the folks so far speaking have been, have been pretty good, but just remember to speak closely to the microphone, so that everyone can, can hear you.
Okay. Everybody hear me? My name is Kristin Donovan, 3 Port. I'm the chair of the Council on Aging here in Stowe, so, just in case you thought election season was over, here we are again, together. So I'm going to give you the overview for the Pompo Citicut Community Center project. So Pompo Citicut is a building that the town of Stowe has already bought and paid for. It's a 36,000-square-foot building, it's almost a whole acre. This building is town-owned, and we pay about $125,000 a year to maintain this building. Slide, please. So, you might ask yourself, why Pompo? Why now? Why a community center? Well, the selectmen put together a committee to take a look at the building and what the best use for this building would be. So they looked at a 2010 study done by the community chest, and they also talked to the different departments and agencies in town to find out what the needs were. And what they found were a lot of people doing a lot of great work, and a lot of need for space. So the first organization, the Council on Aging, which I'm the chairman of, what most people don't know about the Council on Aging is that we are the largest social service department in the town of Stowe, which means we do a lot of fuel assistance for people, food stamps, help advocating for health care, housing, any needs that people have, whether they're 60 and over, or under. Even in this last storm, people who had trouble with their houses and had to move out of their houses, they called the Council on Aging because they know that we are go-getters, and we will find a solution for them. We also provide a lot of educational activities for our seniors, computer classes, we help with tasks. We also do a lot of fun activities, there's a fantastic craft class, art class, is really fantastic, I hear. I'm the teacher. So right now, the Council on Aging, we service 100, I'm sorry, 1,300 seniors in town, and we're doing that in 1,200 square feet of space. So when we have gatherings, we have to limit a lot of our, our get-togethers. When you have 60 seniors in that 1,200-square-foot room, it can get pretty friendly, and that's why we call it the Friendship Room. So on any given day, you can come down to the Council on Aging, and you will see maybe a podiatry clinic, a blood pressure clinic, an art class going on. I hate when they're all together like that, because podiatry and art doesn't really go. But then on another day, you might come down and not see anything happening at all, and that actually does not mean that things aren't happening around town. We hold exercise classes almost daily, and thanks to the wonderful generosity of our churches, we are using the church basement spaces and the Friendship Hall for a lot, our meal site, and a lot of our other activities that we can't house in the Friendship Room. So food pantry was another list, listed need for the community chest. The food pantry right now, again, because of the generosity of the churches, is kind of scattered throughout town. They really feel as though if they had more space, they could house more food, they would have the appropriate freezers and refrigerators to gather that food, and right now, they're servicing over 100 families every other week. The Recreation Department, the Recreation Department does a lot of great work. They have a Stowe camp that, in the summertime, and they have over 300 campers that come, and they made actually $20,000 last year. Most of their activities that they do right now are outdoor activities. They have lacrosse, basketball, baseball, things outside. So they're hoping that they'd be able to do some after-school programs if they had space. Right now, they have no indoor space. So the dream would actually be to have a community center, where the kids are picked up from the middle school and the elementary school on the bus, and dropped off at the community center where they could have after-school programs. Right now, a lot of the kids walk down to the library, and they're not entertained, and they're not supervised, and they can't eat their snacks, and they can't talk with their, their voices, they have to keep their voices down really low. So they would really benefit and be able to expand their programming if they were able to have more space. We also have other needs in town, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Stowe Area Parent Network, Garden Club would love a space, I see Daisy over there. There are a lot of different groups in town that are using churches, using our town buildings, and if they were all together, working together, the town nurse, the social worker, the veterans' agent, if they were all in one hub, one center of the town, they would be able to service our, our townspeople better. Slide, please. So this committee really did its homework, and our architect really did mental gymnastics, trying to figure out what to do with this building. So we started with looking at selling the building, or renting the building. Well, this building is like many others on the market right now, the market is flooded with these kinds of buildings. There's not a big demand for a building like this, especially in Stowe, for companies to move into Stowe. So we were told this building would sit on the market, and it would really be a hard sell. You can look at Skinner down the street, in Bolton, a lot of different buildings in Maynard, a lot of office space that's going unused, so this building really isn't a good seller. I think it's worth more to our town than it is actually a saleable building. So then we looked at tearing Pompo down, just knocking the whole building down. Well, we found out that that actually would cost $1 million, and it would be $1 million that we're not able to bond, and we would still have the space needs that we have throughout town. So then we looked at, well, maybe if we tore down Pompo, and we rebuilt a new building. And we were looking at about a 10,000-square-foot building that would house a limited number of users, but would be designed specifically for those users, and that would cost us $6 million. So we really felt like that was an expensive option. So you will see that as Article 2 in the warrant, and we will be moving no action on that, feeling that that is really an expensive option. We also looked at taking Pompo and redoing everything, redoing all the systems, renovating the entire building, all 36,000 square feet. And we found out that that costs $10 million, and that really is kind of pie in the sky, and hugely expensive in these tough economic times. Then we did a little dance with the fire station for a little while, and we tried to figure out if it was a good idea to combine a community center with a fire station. And for a lot of good reasons, the fire station decided that they really wanted to have a separate safety facility, and I'm sure they'll go into that in their presentation for you. So what we really decided was, we want to do the most that we can with this building to help figure out the space needs of our town with the least amount of money. So the best option was to recycle and reuse Pompo with a $2.5 million option. Slide, please. So this is the plan, for $2.5 million. We, if you look at the red spaces, they're outlined, those are the portable classrooms that the town of Stowe has already purchased, we own those, they're about halfway through their lifespan. To bring the building up to code, to use the building, we have to remove those. So the idea is to reuse and recycle these portable classrooms. The highway department has showed some interest in one of them, and there's a possibility we may use another one in the town, or we may be able to sell one of them. So these two, we're not going to demolish them, but we're going to try to reuse and recycle them. So the blue turquoise area is, represents two-thirds of the building, and that two-thirds of the building, we're going to bring up to code with sprinkler system, which we have to put in, and a new floor. And if you saw the floor that's in there now, needless to say, there's been a lot of little kids in there, and there's a lot of bodily fluid on it, that's all I'm going to say, it needs new flooring. And we're going to do some, a little bit of patching and repairing and painting, and some hazardous material abatement. Slide, please. So that piece of the building would be brought up to code and usable, and areas like the, organizations like the food pantry, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Stowe Area Parent Network, Garden Club, all those different groups would be able to use that larger part of the building. So the smaller part of the building, which is about 10,000 square feet, a third of the building, is the part that's going to be completely renovated. So completely renovated, all the interior finishes, it will be more energy efficient, we'll have new lighting, we'll have new HVAC, we'll have handicapped access bathrooms. And if you look to the left, you'll see there's a large area there with the little circle tables. That's a function hall that will be, we'll be able to rent out for activities, maybe a baby shower, or a birthday party, people could rent that out. We have a kitchen, and the handicapped access bathrooms there. So you may imagine the Council on Aging using that one afternoon, with the Girl Scouts hosting a tea, maybe that evening, we'll have a battle of the big bands with the teens, and then maybe the next morning, we've got a pancake breakfast going on. If anybody went to our Veterans Day, Veterans Day breakfast on Monday, we can throw a really good party, the COA. So if you head to the left, you'll see there are two activity rooms on the top, those would be great multi-use spaces. The thing about Pompo Citicut that really made it not successful as a school building, which was the open space, multi-use areas, are the same reasons why this building will be fantastic as a community center. We can have all kinds of intergenerational projects going on, and all of these organizations working hand in hand. Down below, you'll see some office spaces. Now the Council on Now, the Council on Aging, because we do a lot of social service, we need confidential conference areas. Right now, we're using a janitor's closet. So, if you come to us with an issue, you'll be sitting next to the toilet paper when we're talking to you. So, it would be really great to have these confidential spaces. We'd also have a little bit of work and collaboration with the Rec Department, the Council on Aging, intergenerational projects, teen centers, working together, mentor programs, after-school with homework clubs, and all of these office spaces with a nurse, a town social worker, a veterans' agent could work beautifully together. Slide, please. Okay, so the breakdown of the finances. We have to bring the entire building up to code, which includes removing the portable classrooms, putting in a sprinkler system, getting rid of the hazardous materials. The full renovation of the community centerpiece, which is the 10,000 square feet, is most of the cost, which is $1.2 million, and we're actually buying a lot because being able to rent out that nice space of that function hall will be a great asset. The minimal renovation is the larger part of the building, that's the 20,000 square feet, that we'll still be able to use and all those different groups can use, and it will be multipurpose space so people can go in and out and use different pieces however much that they need. So, when you're looking at soft costs, that number, we're looking for tonight, actually, the design cost, which is $145,000. So, if you remove that from there, you see that we have other soft costs involved. One of the things, actually Linda Hathaway was very helpful in this, we hosedyed a bunch of, we reused and recycled a bunch of equipment and furniture that was already at the school. So, we already have this building pretty much furnished, so we're kind of excited about that. Slide, please. So, this is my favorite slide. Everyone keeps talking about this building and how old it is. Well, we built this building in 1971, which was the same year I was born. And so, all I hear around town is how it's old and decrepit, and it needs a lot of maintenance, and I kind of take that personally because I feel a little cracked sometimes myself, and sometimes my lights are kind of dim too. But this building will need maintenance, but it's not any different than any other building we own in town. All of our buildings need maintenance. We're not expecting any major systems to break down, the building's working the way it is now. We have a roof that's about halfway through its life cycle, and we have a boiler that's still working. So, it's kind of like my minivan out front. Not so pretty, it's kind of dented up, but I own it and it still runs, so let's use it. Slide, please. So, our community center. So, there, as you can tell, there are a lot of great people in town doing a lot of important work. So, I ask you to support them and give them more space so they can expand their programs. It's an investment in our seniors, it's an investment in our kids, it's an investment in our town. So, I really appreciate your time tonight and your attention, and I hope you'll consider this project. Thank you.
All right. No applause, please. Oh, that was a nice presentation. Do we have any debate on this? I believe Mr. Travers was interested in making a statement, and it looks like we have some
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Steve Dundon. I live at 89 West Aken Road in beautiful downtown Stowe. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Stowe Community Chest Board of Directors, and I want to follow up on some of the comments that Kristen made a moment ago. You may not know that every five years, the Community Chest does a very extensive survey to determine what needs the town has that may be partly funded by contributions from the Community Chest. The latest survey was completed in the year 2010, and I want to read to you just one sentence, which will help highlight the impact of the needs analysis from that year and the importance that that study found for a community center. Based on these conversations and the completed questionnaires, the Stowe Community Chest determined that four issues headline the needs for Stowe. They are a designated social worker, increased hours for the town nurse, transportation within town for programs and activities, and an intergenerational community center that accommodates services for youth and seniors. That's what it's all about. And it turns out, if you go back even further in time to 2005, when the previous survey was completed, those same four needs were identified as top priority. So, I think there's a case to be made here, and I think Kristen's documented very well how we can put one of those needs into reality. Speaking personally, I must confess that when I first heard about the first plan for the community center, I was underwhelmed. It seemed to be very expensive, and I left the room thinking, okay, maybe next time. But the revised plan, I thought, was a knockout out of the park, and I want to commend the Pompo Study Committee for being very creative in coming up with a plan that I think adds value, good value for the money, and will really address the needs of numerous groups in town. So, hats off to you folks, and thank you for the time, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Over here.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, my name is Luke Travers, and on behalf of Troop One Stowe Boy Scouts, I would like to offer our support for the proposed community center at Pompo. First and foremost, the community center would offer consistent and reliable meeting space, not only for our troop, which currently serves more than 50 scouts, but for other scouting organizations such as the Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts as well. Our local churches and schools have historically served as a meeting space for our groups, and while we sincerely appreciate the generosity in donating their space for our use, there have inevitably been conflicting dates where scheduled meetings have had to be canceled. Secondly, our organization has no permanent storage space, something that we hope would be available with the prospective community center. Troop One Stowe owns many tents, stoves, even canoes, and we have nowhere to safely store them. We also have several memorabilia items and a beautiful display case, but nowhere to display it. Lastly, we think a multipurpose community center would foster cooperation among local organizations that do not regularly interact today. Our scout troop is a community service organization, as demonstrated by the numerous service projects which we have performed across town. These include a new stairway at the town beach, a new boat landing on Subway Road, the tennis backboard at Community Park, and the soccer court, Pine Beluffs, just to name a few. We would welcome the opportunity to interact in some positive way with the Council on Aging, the Food Pantry, the various other scouting organizations, and hopefully provide assistance and service to the town of Stowe through closer cooperation and other civic organizations. We even have a ready-made, we even have a ready-made volunteer workforce able to help with the renovations if need be, of course, unskilled since we're just kids after all. The Pompo community center we envisioned would not just be for seniors and not just for kids. It would offer an opportunity for the two to work together, and it would benefit the town and everyone in it.
Thank you. We have another speaker over here.
Hi, I'm Amanda Bennett, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold the microphone. I'm the president of the Stowe Food Pantry, and I've been with the pantry for 14 years, and I've been the president for three.
I'm sorry, and where do you live?
28 Crescent Street in Stowe.
Thank you.
We have served the town of Stowe and the surrounding towns for over 20 years. The Stowe Food Pantry is entirely volunteer-run. We receive funding from various sources, including the Stowe Community Chest, excuse me, churches and private donations. We are currently seeing 110 households approximately a month, and that number's on the rise. The pantry provides clients enough food for one week, one time a month. There are many reasons why that moving the pantry into Pompo is a good idea. Sorry, I'm nervous. The first reason is the fact that we've had to turn down food donations in the past because we haven't had enough space. We share space with the church, we are at St. Isidore's, we're at First Parish, and we're also at Union Church as well. So, it would be nice to have all our food in one place. The other reason is, we live in a small town. It would be really nice if we could have a little bit of confidentiality for our clients so they could meet quietly with, one-on-one with our coordinators. And the last reason is, our numbers are on the increase. I could go on and on about how great it would be for us, but we could see more people, we could get more food, and we could serve our clients well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one over here.
Phil Dutch, 45, Samuel Prescott Drive. I understand the motivation being...
Phil, a little closer to the mic.
Thank you. I understand the motivation and appreciate the desire to serve these needs, but I'm wondering how to address the fact that there are people that are having difficulty, partially due to the current taxes, as well as the difficult economic times. You mentioned that there's much unused office space, which is a reflection of the fact that employment is not where it could be. You mentioned that 100 families or so every week or every other week are served by the Food Pantry. Is there something that could be said to, to the people that, for whom this might be an economic hardship?
I guess just that we understand that. I understand that more, I think, than most people because I see it every day at the Council on Aging. I do understand that. We do feel as though we own this building. It's going to cost a little bit more to bring it up to code so we can use it. We have to do something with it. We have to pay to maintain it. Even if you mothball the building, it's going to cost us close to $65,000 a year just to maintain 40 degrees in that building, and it will deteriorate. So, it's a matter of us owning the building, we've bought and paid for it, a little bit of money into it upfront so that we can use it and meet the needs of the people better. To tear Pompo down costs a million dollars, so we're not really looking for that much more. So, we're, I do understand what you're saying, though, and appreciate that.
Okay, over here.
Thank you.
John O'Keefe, 28 Wildwood Road. Just, I'd asked this question during your presentation a few months ago, but have we gotten a forecast for how we're going to handle and offset some of these incremental costs? You've talked about, you know, after-school programs, that's always going to require staff, transportation. We're talking about potentially having the Boy Scouts use it for storage. My hope is that the expectation is not that the town subsidizes this in addition to the $2.5 million capital expense, but that we're actually looking at use fees so that these incremental costs will essentially have a net zero impact to the taxpayer.
That's the hope and dream. We will be looking at user fees. I mean, I think that that's a reasonable thing if you're having after-school programs. The Rec Department, it would be able to help with that. The Council on Aging is looking at Adult Day programs, which are also revenue-driving programs. There's possibility of renting space. These are all things that we would look at in the next process, which would be the design process of the building. So, that would be the next phase of our sort of discovery with this. Thank you.
Over here.
Alan Fierce, 284 Redacre Road. This, this motion actually concerns design funds, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the design that we'd be getting because there are designs, and then there are designs. And when we're talking about buildings these days, there are two ways to look at those designs. One would be the quick and dirty, what's the cheapest way I can build this building? And you had a slide up there that said that one of the things you're trying to achieve is initial cost minimization. That same slide, however, also said one of the goals is to improve energy efficiency. And as I understand it, there may be others more expert in green building design than I am out there, but when you were talking about green building design, you're talking about slightly higher initial costs, but long-term savings in your energy costs. This is what I'm looking for, for a variety of reasons. Now, I'm going to be here, I think, in Stowe for the next 25 years, paying off these bonds. There are people in town that are talking about not being able to afford their taxes right now. They may be concerned most of all about those initial costs. I'm looking at the overall cost, construction plus maintenance plus energy costs over 25 years, if that's what your bonds are. What kind of a design are we going to be getting here? Is there a way that we can assure ourselves that what we're getting is a design that will give us the overall lowest cost, all those elements combined, including energy, over the next 25 years, rather than just the quickest, dirtiest design we can get to keep that cost down, so that when we come back next year, you can get the vote you're looking for?
Okay, well, I have two responses to that. One is if you wanted a completely energy-efficient, green-designed building, you're going to knock it down and build something new. I mean, we're dealing with a building that we have. The other thing is that once we remove the portable classrooms, we're already making the building more efficient because those are electric heat and air-conditioned. Then, we're talking about renovating a third of the building, which will be more energy-efficient because we'll have new HVAC, we'll have better windows in that area of the building. So, we are trying to address that, but we do, we are dealt the hand that we're dealt we have this building. I can let the architect speak to the design piece of it, she could give a better idea as far as that's concerned, but we are doing the best we can as far as making the building more energy-efficient, so do you have anything to add to that?
Over here.
Yes, my name is Paul McLaughlin, 110 Hudson Road in Stowe. I have three questions. One, where on earth did you come up with a million dollars to demolish Pompo?
All right, don't shoot the messenger.
May I continue just to...
All right, sorry.
I would like to know where that came from because I've done a lot of study on that, and I've discovered that $4 to $6 per square foot is typical for demolition costs. I then went to a firm that did the demolition at the Rowe Nuclear Plant out here in Massachusetts, and I asked them, was $25 a square foot for demolition reasonable? And they said it was outrageously high, outrageous. So, I'd like to know where that million dollar comes from versus the $4 to $6 that is fairly typical for single-story, 40,000-square-foot buildings. That's question one.
So, why don't, why don't we deal with that? Do we have an answer to that question?
I can have our architect probably.
Okay.
Kevi Kang. I'll do the best I can. We did use a cost estimator, a professional cost estimator, who's a quantity surveyor who does this all the time in terms of estimating, all right? So, they have many decades of experience doing this. Unfortunately, we're talking public sector demolition, all right? In other words, no matter what you do that involves bidding, you're going to have to use prevailing wage, all right? So, that right away boosts up the cost. You can't just use any demolition company. They have to use the prevailing wage rates for all their equipment operators and everybody else who's going to be involved in the demo. And plus, the demo is not just demo, it's demo and restoration of the site. You can't just, you know, take the building down and then just leave a big hole in the ground, okay? And we also are going below grade, we're going to take, the demo includes taking out everything, the foundations, not just what's, what you see on top, but everything, and then you'd have to fill it. And then, finally, oh, there was one more thing. Well, there is going to be the whole cost, but that's minor. There is design cost in terms of you have to have a professional draw up the plans for it, it has to go out to bid. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. Oh, and hazardous materials. In Massachusetts, you can't demo before you remove the hazardous materials, so that cost is in there.
What hazardous materials are in that building?
There's asbestos tile, there's, you know, some minor asbestos in there. We haven't actually done a thorough hazardous materials testing because it wasn't, this is just conceptual design. We will have to, once this project moves forward, everything will have to be tested. So, there might be asbestos in the tile, there might be asbestos around piping that's concealed underneath the slabs, there might be asbestos in the window caulking sometimes and glazing. So, all those things have to be removed before, as well as the big, the huge roof that's there, it's, you know, 40,000 square feet, 36,000 square feet. We don't know right now if there's an underlying layer of built-up roofing underneath it. The new roof, the rubber roof, goes on top of it. So, unless we do a core, which we haven't done yet, we don't know what's underneath, and built-up roofing historically also contain asbestos. So...
This was not, this, what, what year was this building?
1970, '71, which is a very asbestos year.
V80 tile, yes.
There was definitely asbestos in that decade. So, so, in other words...
In other words, you don't know that there's asbestos, you're guessing.
No, we put in an allowance for asbestos. We put in allowance for asbestos at this point, but that does have to be done before demolition. I was just trying to explain why demolition costs might be quite high. Plus, you have to cap all the utilities, make them safe, all those things, you know, and then, which involves all different... and then, which involves all different trades.
Which is not unusual for any demolition job.
Yeah, but $4 is way under. I mean, it's not really...
I'm sorry, this isn't a discussion. I think the question was answered.
All right, you've answered that question.
I'm going to move over here and let this gentleman speak. We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
We do one at a time, over here.
Edward Morgan, I live on Taylor Road. I consider myself to be a civic-minded individual, and I place a high value on community, but somehow I just can't believe that with the paint not even dry on the Center School project, that we're being asked to consider not one, not two, but three multimillion-dollar projects. Here's the thing. My house could use some repairs and could use some renovations, but I can't afford it. My car is going to sit outside this winter because I don't have a garage. I'd like to build a garage, but I can't afford it. My home office is in a small cramped bedroom, so I'd like to add a room above the garage that I'd like to build so that my office could be bigger and roomier, and I'd like to furnish it with all the state-of-the-art equipment, or at least replace my old and slow computer, but I can't afford it. Now, tonight we're being asked just to vote on the design costs. I have the old figures from when we were considering all three multimillion-dollar projects, but now, according to my calculations, the design costs for just the two projects would be $534,000. Now, I don't know about you, but I certainly wouldn't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a design if I wasn't pretty darn sure that I was going to complete the project. It seems to me that we should vote first on whether or not we want to do the project at all, and then vote on the money for design. Now, several options were discussed for the projects that we're considering tonight, and we're being told that these are the best options available, but there are other options available. There was a letter in the October 10th issue of the Stowe Independent by a woman named Margaret Lorenzo, and I don't really know Margaret Lorenzo, but I hope she's here tonight, and I hope she'll present her ideas because I find them preferable to the ideas that we're being presented with. But just to give you a sense of what she said, I'll read from the letter to the editor. It said, "The former Pomposited School could gracefully morph into a great public library. The present Stowe Public Library could become a community center with 90 days of modest And then there was another gentleman, actually, I think it was this gentleman here that was at the October 18th Public Information Forum, and they had a really good idea about the fire department, and I hope he'll present that idea tonight. The thing is, though, we can't consider any alternatives, any other better ideas that might be out there unless we first vote no on the design funds that we're being asked to approve today. Now, we've also been told that if we don't approve these projects now, that the costs will only go up in the future. And that may or may not be true, but you know what? The costs for the repairs and renovations on my house and the garage I'd like to build will probably go up in the future, too. But I can't afford it, okay? So the thing is, and who knows? You know, maybe now with the newly re-elected government, there might be some more stimulus money made available for projects like these. Or some wealthy philanthropist might decide he wants to donate the money for one or all of these projects. Now, I know that second one sounds a little bit far-fetched, but I don't think it's any more far-fetched than asking people to continually pay more and more in property taxes. I'm glad that we're going to be able to vote by ballot tonight because I've heard from several residents in town that they feel intimidated by having to vote by hand, and they're made to feel like they're not civic-minded. And I've also been told that there are people who feel like, who have been made to feel like if they don't want to support these projects, then they should just move.
So we need to finish it up.
I'm sorry?
We have a three-minute limit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just about finished. But I personally don't have any qualms about stating publicly how I plan to vote on all these projects because I just can't afford it.
Thank you. I think we had another question over here.
Yes, thank you. Again, Paul McLaughlin, 110 Hudson Road. In the warrant, it indicates that there's an acknowledgement that there may be additional costs, operating costs, associated with the renovation. And my question is, why have you not included operating costs as part of the impact on us taxpayers? Just to give you an idea, I'm a retired CEO of a company that had 300,000 square feet of manufacturing and office space, and I know that if you go from a property that's being maintained in, what did you call it, a just, oh, in a fallow fashion, we're not heating it, we're not air-conditioning it, and you're telling me that it's $100,000 a year to just leave that building unheated or minimally heated, and now we're going to have trash removal, janitorial, snow removal, grounds maintenance, HVAC, septic pumping, and I'm to believe that it's only going to be $100,000? I do not believe that. I believe it'll be another $150,000 when all is said and done, and that would about double the impact on we taxpayers if we have an average house.
The maintenance costs that we have...
Is the question, why isn't the maintenance cost in this article?
What assumptions are we making with respect to operating costs when that renovation is done?
We're going on the numbers that the school system gave us. The school system told us that it costs $125,000 to $135,000 a year to run the building with people in it.
You don't air-condition in the summer, however.
No.
You will, though.
No, not the whole building. We're looking at making, a third of the building is going to have HVAC, a third of the building. The rest of the building, we're not.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Fierce over here if he has, I think he has something else to add.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. Ms. Donovan said we might be able to hear from the architect about the, I'm not asking for a complete green building. We know this is a renovated building here, but you are putting in lighting. There is an HVAC system. I don't know if anything is being done with windows. There are systems that can more efficiently control lighting and heating that are separate from the main components themselves. What are we getting in terms of a design? Because I really, I support this project. I just want to make sure that it costs us, over the long term, as little as possible.
So can the architect answer?
Yeah, I think she said, basically.
Yeah, I thought Kristin did a great job answering. I mean, we haven't really gone into the details of it, but our goals are to do the best we can in terms of making the building efficient, given the budget and given the existing building. You're right, and she's right, to get the most efficient green building, build a new one, you know? But that's not happening, so in renovating this one, there are things that we can do that we will try to make as efficient as possible. This new 10,000 square feet will have a new HVAC system that will be as energy-efficient as you can get at this point. It will be gas-fired, that's our intention. And then, the same thing with lighting, we'll go with, you know, high-efficiency lamps as much as possible. We can do switching, daylight harvesting-type things. We'll do the best we can, as well as water-saving as much as we can. But it is limited because it is an old building. And when the roofing gets repaired, redone, and this is not part of the 2.5 million of re-roofing the entire building, we can add, you can add insulation, and that will be a great energy savings because, as you know, the biggest roof loss is through the roof, and this is a huge roof. You know, the walls, less so. It's only one floor, it's not losing as much through the walls, and there's minimal windows, really. That building has very few windows. The windows, unfortunately, are not in the budget either. We can look at it and try to add it during the bidding process as an add alternate if it's affordable.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, just, you say within the budget. We haven't set the budget yet. The budget is flexible. I think what needs to be done for each of these elements is a long-term energy analysis and see what, this is a public building we are going to have for many years. We don't have to worry about a two- or three-year payback. We're worried about a 25-year payback.
Yes.
I'd like to see what the budget is for those kinds of elements with a 25-year payback.
And I think during the, that's what the whole design process is for, okay? Because this is only concept. When we go into design, we will look into all these details, price them all out, weigh the, you know, pros and cons of is this a worthwhile investment or not, and see where we go from there.
That's what we need.
So it sounds like you may have a new recruit for your, for the design committee. We have another new speaker over here.
44 Lenterline, my name is Miloschenovsky. I have a first one question, then I have a few statements. How was done the selection of architects for these projects?
Can you...
I can answer that. Selection of architects is mandated by the state. It's through a designer selection process, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 7. So the town has to have a committee that issues an RFP, or Request for Proposals.
That's not what I was asking. I was actually asking, and frankly, not you, how many architects were basically, you know, interviewed and selected for each project?
Mike, do you know the number of architects?
Specifically?
It was around 10.
10?
Around 10 for each project?
Around 10 for the community center project.
For community center project, okay. Thank you. I've interviewed and hired architects my entire life for the past 40 years, and as many architects as I dealt with in interviews and so on, I get different pricing on every project I have ever done. And I've done over 250 million worth of construction. As far as the demolition, this type of a building probably will cost half of what you are stating. Therefore, I have to really question, and this is my opinion, frankly, and I'm not going to back it up or anything, but the point basically being is, you can come up with almost any figure. Why you are now suddenly saying, you know, $1 million for demolition when it can be half, and you are comparing it to cost of construction of something which frankly, in my mind, is very doubtful if it makes sense, but which is not only on the bottom of what it would cost, but can easily cost twice as much for that amount of square footage if it is done decently. The problem is that in terms of, for instance, the school which was built here and which frankly is fabulous, congratulation to whoever was involved in it, the fact is, never dies, it cost probably 25% more than it needed to. Because when people get involved and when they start to say, oh, babe, somebody else is paying for it, wonderful, let's add this, let's add nice wonderful tiles, well, the cost goes up. Who is controlling this? Because once you approve something, once you get some kind of funding, guess what? People start to come up with more ideas, and they are wonderful, they are civic, they are great. Everyone applauds them, everyone's on everything, and guess what? The cost goes up, and your project of $2.5 million suddenly becomes $5. Well, guess what? You can build a new 10,000 square feet for $5. And guess what? You will not need to deal with one thing which was not mentioned here. You have a basically nucleus of a new building surrounded by old falling down, rest of the building, which still has operating costs and somebody has to deal with. I don't quite know how this town is operating in this way because you are, on one hand, doing figures which really don't make sense, but which are showing really expensive price tag for something you don't want to happen, and very cheap cost on something which you would like to have, which you dream up. Well, guess what? I can promise you more than anybody else can deliver, and so can anybody else. That is my problem. Not that the ideas are bad, obviously civic center is a wonderful thing, but the figures are all wrong. And some of the architects which were selected for these projects know me, so you can ask them if I can bring costs down and if I'm speaking nonsense here or not. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take one more over here.
Bill Booth, 14 Evelyn Road. Couple of points that I wanted to bring out. I share the concern of an earlier speaker that we are voting to spend something over a half a million dollars on designs for projects that we haven't really considered whether we're willing to spend the amount that will cost if we like the designs. We also don't know how much the designs will actually come out to, and so I would recommend that when people vote on these design costs, that they consider how they would vote if the amounts are what are currently estimated after the design is done, because it doesn't make sense to spend money on a design for something that we're going to vote against later. The other thing is, and I might mention that, although I do have concerns about this, I believe I'm in favor of the project. I like the idea. I liked it from the beginning when it was first mentioned, back when we talked about renovating Center School. I did not expect it was going to cost $2.5 million. And I tend to be rather skeptical of public projects because I've had many opportunities to compare the cost for public buildings versus private buildings of similar complexity. And I know that when the government builds it, it costs much more money. But I did a little quick arithmetic. It appears to me that the cost for the total renovation of the third of the building that they're talking about renovating seems to be, if my arithmetic is right, approximately one-half the cost per square foot of what it would cost to build a house. So I think maybe the estimate of $125,000 for that is not out of line, and the remainder of the cost for the other part probably not too far out of line either. So I'm reasonably comfortable with this if the people are prepared to spend the $2.5 million. I would not be comfortable if it comes back in at $5 million after the design is done. Thank you.
Yeah, that's not the plan. We're hoping, we are expecting it's coming in at 2.5. That's why we have that number. Thank you.
I'm going to interrupt the debate here. We've exceeded a half hour, so I'm going to ask if anyone would like to go to a microphone and move the question. Otherwise, we'll continue with debate. Would anyone, all right?
Bob Glorioso, 70 Burchill Road. First of all, I've been involved with a building project at First Parish Church and hiring architects, so I've gone through this process. We've been going through it for about five years. It's a difficult process. The costs for the design phase are not out of line when I see what it is compared to what we're doing. The estimate for a building is an estimate for a building. You don't know what it's going to be until you do the design work. So you've got to do the design work one way or the other. You can't get started without doing that. So voting whether you're going to have it or not, you don't know whether you're going to vote for a $2 million building or a $3 million building or a $100,000 building. You don't know until you do the design work, so you've got to do the design work. And I'd like to comment on the energy efficiency for a second. I've been involved with designing solar houses, as you know. There's several of them in Stowe that were built that I was involved with the design. And it's possible to retrofit things and really help out. We've done that at the church as well, and right now, it costs a lot. That building was built 160 years ago. So we've managed to improve its energy efficiency without spending a lot of money. So you can do it, lighting, insulation, windows, all the fundamentals. If you do them, it isn't very expensive. So if you look at the cost of adding some green stuff, it isn't as much as you might think it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm very much in favor of this. I think the $2.5 million, if that's where we come in, it's a bargain.
Okay, over here.
I'm Sarah Kilkenny, I'm at 92 Adams Drive in Stowe. I am also in favor of this project. I am also in favor of this project, but I'm gonna make it really simplistic. I understand that tonight most of the discussion is gonna be about numbers and about estimates and about how rational and how reasonable they are. And I understand that there's obviously room between, you know, the high and the low figures. And basically what it comes down to for me, and I don't know if it does for everybody, but it's basically, does 2.5 million seem like a good estimate and a good investment for Stowe for this cross-section of the town? And it's something that we started a long time ago with the Stowe Building Project, and we looked at this as a possibility moving forward, and I really think 2.5 million is a great estimate for this town and a great investment.
Okay, over here.
Good evening. I'm Janet Stiles, 58 Pine Point Road. I wanted to say that... My first point is that Stowe is a town of approximately 4,000 households paying for all these projects. Stowe is not Newton, we're not Brookline. We are crushing people with this debt. There's been a lot on these projects of playing upon people's emotions. We're all in favor of all the services that are supported, but I also, as a professional in the medical field, see what happens to people when their taxes are too high. They will not pay for the medicines they need, they will not get the dental care they need, they will cut corners, they will use space heaters to put themselves at risk. There are other things that will happen that aren't mentioned here. As far as the cost, the second point I want to make is that it was a somewhat erroneous feeling when you presented the fact that taking down the building would be a million dollars and keeping it maintained yearly would be 125,000 dollars. It's going to be more. This is going to be a refurbished, older building, and it's going to need repairs, which will demand attention and which will have to be paid for. So I think that there are other alternatives. I think that we should consider taking down the building. The land could be sold, it would be a land purchase. It could bring money into the town rather than always taking money out of the town. The other thing, even part of the property could be saved, and a modest building could be built sometime in the future if we would like to save for that. And the last thing is I think we are not using the space that we have. When we go into the town building, I would like people to go into the town building, but every time I go in on the first floor, there is a conference room which is, seems to be always open during the day. I would think that it would be used mostly for nighttime meetings, and that, I believe it's called the Warren Room, but I apologize if I'm wrong on that. On the upper floors, there are two committees, a planning board and a conservation committee, who do great work for the town, but both large spaces, massive spaces really, if you compare them to how businesses use their space, house one or two employees. And those, that space could be reconfigured. So I think we should think more, and I think, again, the overall picture, I think we should think about the fiscal cliff. I should think, we should think about really where we are and what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
My name is Gary Kunselman, 52 Sommel Road. I believe we have a diverse amount of opinions that have been expressed tonight, and I think we have enough information to consider this article. I'd like to perhaps reinvestigate it after we hear Article, what was it, four? Or three? Three.
We'll take the votes after...
I'd like to make a motion to move on.
Okay, so I believe I heard a motion to terminate debate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to terminate debate. This is not a motion to terminate debate and go to a vote, because we won't be voting on this article till a little while later. This is just a motion to terminate the current debate that requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of terminating debate now. All opposed. I will call that unanimous in favor of terminating debate. Do we have a... So again, we're not going to take the vote right now. We will take the vote after a couple more articles. Do we have a motion for Article Two?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article Two.
Is there a second?
Right.
So we have a motion for no action on Article Two. Why do we want no action on Article Two?
Mr. Moderator, the Community Center Building Committee had determined that this is not the preferred option at this time, and had asked that no action be moved in favor of a less expensive option, one which you just heard about.
Thank you. Is there any debate on no action? Seeing none, we will go to a vote on this, no action on Article Two. That requires a majority vote. All in favor of no action on Article Two? All opposed. I will call that unanimously in favor of no action on Article Two. Article Three, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of 390,000 dollars for the purpose of funding the architectural and engineering services necessary for project design development and complete construction documents for the construction of a new fire station on the current Crescent Street site to replace the existing fire station, including related administrative expenses and any other costs incidental or related thereto. That the total cost of the proposed fire station project is estimated at this time to be approximately 7,200,000 dollars. However, it is acknowledged that this estimate is non-binding and subject to change as a result of project details developed during the design phase.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I will note there is a change from the warrant article to the motion. It is again stripped out the language for having a ballot question on a Proposition Two and a Half override. That ballot question is already passed, so it is not necessary for the motion. Do we have a recommendation? We'll take capital planning first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital planning supports the recommendation of this article. The fire department operations have changed significantly since the building was built in 1965, and this building has a number of problems that we'll discuss later. It's time for a replacement, so the capital planning supports this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The current fire station is 47 years old and has significant issues. The structure itself is well out of compliance with current code and is failing. The space is noticeably insufficient. Most importantly, the lack of space lends itself to numerous safety concerns for our firefighters. Further, there is not enough space to house all of our existing fire equipment today. Though the proposed design of about 14,000 square foot, feet, plus an additional 3,300 square foot basement represents about a three times increase in the existing space, not counting the shipping container, the space is actually smaller than most comparable fire stations currently being built, and majority of the increase in space is just to maintain the existing functionality in a more safe manner. Due to the failing structure and the strict seismic requirements for essential facilities such as the fire station, the cost of renovating was prohibitively expensive. This also meant that any possible ad-reno project would not be an efficient use of funds. Though the Pompo site was considered as an alternative, the possible savings here are not clear. Further, there are few, if any, examples of a viable mixed-use facility involving a fire department outside of public safety uses. The fact that it would be shared with a community center was a further concern. The overall cost of the project of 7.2 million, which would include the design funds in this article, would represent about $153 a year additional tax burden for the average taxpayer over the next 25 years. If the subsequent project was not approved within a few years, the 390,000 in design funds alone would represent about a $29 a year additional tax burden for the average taxpayer over the next five years.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, on Article One, I didn't ask the selectmen had a recommendation on that, but on this article, do the selectmen have a recommendation? I believe they wanted to.
The selectmen have voted to approve design funds for both the community center and the fire station.
Thank you. Now I believe we have a presentation.
Hi, I'm Ross Perry, and I've been on the Fire Station Committee now since last May when you voted some money for us to do a feasibility study. You can see the other members of the committee. We were charged with evaluating the current building, its infrastructure, how does it work as far as heating and ventilation goes, and how does it work as far as meeting operational needs? We also were asked to come up with a recommendation on the best solution, and we did this by looking at multiple options. Next slide. So why now? Well, this is not a new need. The fire station has had problems with this building for a number of years. As Chris mentioned, it's 47 years old, and operations have changed dramatically in that time. When it was first, when it was built, it was designed to house four smaller fire trucks and two police cruisers. In fact, much of the interior space was designed around the police department needs. The second-floor assembly space used for training has been cut back dramatically to put in bunk rooms. We're no longer running a strictly a call department parking our trucks there. We now have firefighters in the station, working in the station, living in the station 24/7. The fire department today is asked to handle a lot more things than it used to handle before. Hazmat responses, medical responses, significant training has to go on in that building, a lot of operational changes since that building was first designed. It also houses men and women. We only have facilities essentially for the men that are there. In 1971, the fire department answered 79 calls. Last year, the fire department answered 830 calls. That's not counting the 560 permits that they issued or the 269 inspections that they completed. So the operations have changed. When the fire department was built, it supported a town with 3,100 residents. We now have over 6,700 residents. If you look at the build-out plan for Stowe and the lifespan of this building, we could see another 50% increase. The fire station just doesn't meet today's needs. It's been waiting in line behind other school projects. The town building, the police station, the Hale School renovation, the recent Nishober renovation, the recent Center School project, those have all sort of stepped up in front of the fire station project. It's now time to move this fire station project ahead, this building project ahead. There are a number of deficiencies in this building. The 5,400 square feet that we have is not enough space. The picture there can sort of show you that the fire truck barely fits to the door. Remember when it was designed, it was smaller, trucks were being used. We have a lot of trucks that are not stored in the building and a lot of equipment that's not stored in the building. Next slide, please. The building is settling. We're seeing cracks in the floor, cracks in the walls. These are both tripping hazards and an indication that there may be some problems with the soil underneath that building. The walls are block and brick, and they're not reinforced, so they don't meet new seismic code. A new code was put in place just recently that says buildings have to now meet the same seismic requirements as California. Now, when I was on this committee a few months ago, I kind of thought that seismic requirements were a little bit unnecessary, but then about three weeks ago, we had a little wake-up that says maybe it might be necessary. Next slide, please. The fire station doesn't have a fire suppression system. It would be a little bit embarrassing to go out on a fire call to come back to find out that the fire station burnt down. So it would be appropriate to put in sprinkler system. The self-contained breathing apparatus compressor. First of all, it pulls air from the apparatus bay, which might have exhaust fumes in it. It's also not any separate structure as it should be today. If one of those air tanks were to explode while refilling, not only will it take out the fire truck that's only two feet away, it has a good possibility of injuring a firefighter. These are changes that should be made in the building, no matter what we do long-term. Next slide. In addition to the infrastructure problems, I could go on and on about roofs that leak and electrical systems that are not adequate, but there are also operating problems. There's not enough space for the current operations. There's no private triage space for medical people. If someone comes in with a medical problem, and they get those all the time, they're treated in the main apparatus bay where other people come and go, or they're treated in the office space. They should have a private space for consultation. There's no space to store the hazmat or disaster supply equipment. The trading space is very cramped and inadequate. There isn't space for a watchroom, a fire prevention office, or EMF supplies. As I mentioned, there's no separate restroom or showers for the men and women. Next slide. So we looked at multiple options. We looked at what can we do just to bring the building up to speed a little bit? The first option we came to was 796,000 dollars. It would have maintained the same space. It would address some of the electrical issues. It would have maybe brought in a new well, a new restroom, upgraded some of the other kitchen appliances, but it really didn't address the operational needs. There would be no health or safety improvements with that change, with this option, no additional space added to it, and the numerous code violations wouldn't be addressed with this much. And we felt that honestly, 796,000 dollars for the minimal amount of work that it would do just wasn't the right option. Option what we call 1B would have been 3.6 million dollars, but again, no space increase. What we would have done is look at some of the code issues and improve some of those. We would have refurbished the interior, done some retrofit, maybe beefed up the floor under the apparatus bay, and put in that new separate SCBA room that I mentioned earlier. But again, this is a lot of improvement, a lot of cost for minimal operational improvements. It would be basically money spent to meet the new seismic code, which is building a new superstructure inside the existing building. So a lot of money to make it meet code, but no real operational benefits on there. It also would be built on the same subsurface problem that we have now. I mentioned that the building is settling. We had suspicion that it's settling because it's built on top of the Hale School when it burnt down. Turns out, after soil samplings, borings, that's what they found, remnants of the old Hale School. So any improvement on this existing building is gonna have the same problems of being built on a weak and poor soil underneath. Next one, please. What we called Option Two was to take the existing building, add a 7,000-foot space out back, and basically take the existing building and make that the apparatus bay. So we'd have more space for equipment, and we'd have offices out back. It still wasn't enough to meet all of the operational needs. It still left some equipment outside with this option, so we discounted this option also. As I said, it wasn't enough space, and the soil boring problem indicated any retrofit of this building didn't make sense, because you'd be building on top of the old Hale School. Option Four? Next slide. Kristin mentioned the idea of moving the fire station down to Pompo. Initially, that seemed like a good idea. We're telling you we're out of space. Pompo says we have 36,000 square feet. Why don't we do that? Well, it doesn't make sense, and we've asked a lot of experts to mix a community center with a fire station. Mixing fire stations with police stations, that happens all the time, but we couldn't find any examples of people mixing these type of diverse operations. It shouldn't be a surprise to you that this doesn't make sense for a fire station. The school committee decided that Pompo didn't make sense as a school. The school billing committee decided that Pompo didn't make sense to be renovated as a school, both our uses that it was designed for. So to think that we could renovate Pompo for a fire station, something that it was never intended to be, that shouldn't be a surprise to us. So what are we recommending? This will be a new structure at the existing site. The price is estimated to be 7.2 million dollars. That's what you spent 7... That's what you spent $70,000, you voted last May, was for us to do this feasibility study and to hire an architect to give us the best estimate we can get at this stage. So, this will involve demolishing the existing building and building a new, new building with 14,000 square feet with a 3,000-square-foot basement underneath that. So, we feel this is the best option overall. It addresses all of the deficiencies that I've mentioned in the building, both structural and operational. It's better than Option 1A, which didn't address any of these issues. It's better than Option 1B, which didn't provide enough space. It's better than Option 2, because that only partially addressed these needs, and that we feel this Option 3 is the one that addresses all the operational needs and all the deficiencies of the building. So, future-proofing is the key. As I mentioned, we hope to have a 3,000-square-foot basement. This is assuming there isn't too much ledge. We understand there is ledge up there, and we have got that in our cost estimates. The 3,000-square-foot basement will give us room to grow in the future. And I guess we need to keep in mind that even though these buildings have a lifespan of 25 to 35 years based upon all the internal equipment, we keep our buildings for a lot longer than that. So, we should have this building meet our operational needs longer than the bond payment for the building. As residents, you've invested a lot in Stowe buildings. I mentioned Hale and Pump, I mean Hale and Center and Shober. A lot of buildings have, you've invested in. You've invested a lot in your own houses. You have an investment in your health of your family, where you should expect the best possible fire department to show up when you need it. It's now time to invest in the people who will be protecting these personal investments. So, we hope that you will support this. It's been supported in the ballots, and we think now is the time to address these deficiencies and move this fire department ahead. One more. So, on behalf of the men and women in the Stowe Fire Department, the people who are asking to protect our investments, to stand by 24/7, we hope that you will help improve the place where they have to go to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we just wanted a couple, just show a couple of slides, just to kind of highlight the existing facility. This is actually our trading room today. It's about half of the department at this current, we were running a CPR refresher. That's what a new one looks like. That's the air-fire station. The SCBA compressor that Ross spoke about, it's really dangerous to be filling SCBA bottles out in the middle of the apparatus floor, and that's what a new one looks like at the new air-fire station. And decon for area gear, you know, and this is a decon area for firefighters. That's something that we don't have today. As you can imagine, one of the reasons we need de— [laughter] Yeah, that's our, that's our one, because we don't have one. The reason that's so important today is we do EMS, we do a lot of medical runs. One of the biggest needs we have for decon is EMS calls. You can just imagine on, on some of our calls, we've actually have to take the ambulance out of service so we can take buckets of water and Clorox and scrub it. We've had calls where we've had to scrub the ceiling of the ambulance, the walls, the stretcher. As you can imagine, bodily fluids happen all the time, a lot of blood, and like, like we said before, Kristin mentioned, every body fluid you can imagine. So, that's why we really need the decon, and it's really essential for firefighter safety. And again, there's turnout gear in Stowe, how close that is to the trucks. And this is the air station again, where we can put gear out and store properly. Turnout gear for a firefighter today, we're probably spending about $2,500 per firefighter. We're very fortunate. We had received a grant a few years ago for $53,000, and you taxpayers match that. When I first came to Stowe, our turnout gear was in sad shape. We had a lot of turnout gear that wasn't NFBA compliant, a lot of it was torn. We've made a huge investment. We, like I said, we put about $106,000 into turnout gear, and that's why we want to properly store it, so we can maintain and it's useful life. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Do we have any debate on this? Would anyone like to speak or ask questions? Over here.
Mike Kocinski, 12 Canterbury Road in Stowe. I'll ask the same question I asked at the public, at the last public meeting, is we see the average cost per square foot in Massachusetts is about 180 square feet. The difference between prevailing wage and open shop is about $20 per square foot on a national average. I'm just wondering, how does it break down that we're at closer to 500 square feet as opposed to, you know, even 250, I would say, okay, well, that makes sense, but I don't understand why we're almost threefold the, the average for Massachusetts.
Sure. A couple of things on square foot. We have looked a little more into square footage costs, and we're finding that comparable fire stations have been running at about that, at the same. What I can tell you is, once we, once we get these engineering funds, we're going to be able to figure out exactly what the station's going to cost and come up with a true, you know, square footage cost.
And the, excuse me, sir. And the, and the number we're estimating is between 416 and 426, so it's not quite
So, over here.
Daisy Gibbon, meeting hopefully. I don't know about the rest of you, but when a bunch of guys are willing to risk their life—
Daisy, hold it a little, hold it a little closer.
And when I, when these guys are willing to risk their life for me, I feel that I and everyone here has a moral obligation to be sure that they work in safe and healthy environment.
Thank you. Over here.
I'll second the notion, but I have a question for the architect, if I may.
Sure.
Ask the question.
Well, what's, what's the question? We asked the question of the moderator and all.
Option 4. Is it feasible to actually do this as a phased stuff where one would build a new, partial fire station at different location, utilize the old one as is, and then build second phase later? In other words, if this is declined, for whatever reason, I cannot imagine why anybody would do that, but let's say that is the case, the bad scenario would be that he would be in the same shape as you are, and you are lacking space, but it would be possible as a potentially phased-in, but I'm not as familiar with fire stations as you are. Brett, do you have any opinion on it?
Chief, do you have someone that can speak to that as your consultant here?
Yeah, our architect here, Brett Donham.
Brett Donham, the architect for the project.
Very, very nice to see you again.
Yes. I don't believe that it is feasible to build this building in phases, in large part because all the material underneath the building, down about six feet, is unsuitable material for founding a building, which is why the building is sinking. So, it all has to be removed before you can build a new building.
No, no, I didn't mean on the same side. I meant if you would basically find new site, build whatever sort of like center of the new fire station with the essentials, but not the entire project on that site, and then utilize the old building until one can basically, you know, build the second phase as is. In other words, not do anything to it.
Has that been, another site been considered?
It's been considered a couple of ways. One, we consider the Pompositikit site, which might have accomplished what you're suggesting because we could build the fire station at Pompo while we keep the existing station, but for the reasons—
But you see my point, basically, what I'm trying to say is, if it is possible to create a new close of the new fire station, modern, new, brand-new building, but for less money than building the entire concept as it is right now, and utilize the old building for the less essential functions which could be done there as is.
Well, I'll let the chief talk about the location, because we did feel that the current location is the best location, but if we were to consider another site, then we have to acquire the other site. And short of using the Pompositikit site, which is an option, but to spend a million or more to buy another site, we didn't think was appropriate. And chief can talk about why the Crescent Street site is the best location.
Yeah, the Crescent Street site is actually perfect for us. If you look at Stowe, it's, it's like it's perfectly put in the, in the middle of town, and we have access roads. We can go left or right on Crescent Street. We can come down across and head out, take a left on 62, take a right on 62. We can head out to Lake Boone towards the Fire Academy. We can go around the corner and get on Boxborough, Taylor Road. So, it's strategically like a perfect place, and we have very good response times. One of the, one of the reasons I think, if I could interject a little bit on your question, one of the, one of the things, we run a combination fire department. We have four full-time firefighters. There's two on per shift. They work from 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. We have two firefighter EMTs that work per diem that come in from 6:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning. One of the reasons why I wouldn't want to split operations, I mean, I understand, it's a good question, we want to try to keep all our equipment and gear together because, again, we, we run really, you know, light. We have a great call force. Most of them work out of town, you know, during the day, but they're there at night. So, we want to make sure that when we have a call, we don't know what equipment we're going to need for every call. So, if we can have all the equipment where our firefighters, you know, live and work, it makes our life a whole lot easier. If we were to get in a split operation, it would definitely reduce response times.
I was just thinking strictly because you are talking about two minutes, driving distance between the two locations, so it didn't seem to be that great.
Yeah, well, two minutes, like I say, for us is a lot of time.
So, I won't argue with you on that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, over here.
Janet Stiles, 58, Pine Point Road. Thank you very much for your great service to the town. I do want to separate out the arguments that you're making. As far as the number of calls, the increase in calls, you did say, and the facts are that of most of those increased calls, most of them are medical calls, and that problem is not addressed better, medical service needs an ambulance. People appreciate your coming as the first responders, the EMTs, but really, what you need to do is coordinate care with other towns to get better ambulance service here and also to, and not to put money on a, on a building. Second thing is the arguments about storage, storage of trucks. There is a five-acre site, the Stowe Fire Academy, which is, has empty space, large parking lots, unused space, and there certainly could be storage arrangements made for sharing and mutual sharing on that. The other thing is for office space. The office space for two people, I've visited it, and I think it's adequate. Again, we're going to compare what people are working in and what office space is appropriate. The argument about private triage for walk-ins, I really think when people come in in an emergency situation, they can be handled in your office space. Again, I've seen your office space. It can be curtained, and that's the type of thing that can be provided. Certainly, you're not going to keep people there. You're not going to be doing anything specific there. Another argument that you're making is that you need training facilities, but there is tremendous training, brand-new facilities, again, at the Stowe Fire Academy. And I think it's reasonable, and I think I'm willing to bet that if the administration worked together, we could use that, those facilities. So, I think a building, again, is not what you need, and as far as what we do need, as far as improvement in medical care, I think we need more prevention. I think we should have something in which we could visit people's homes and pick up the hazardous material in their garages. I did ask about that recently, and I was told to contact the public health officer, that we had nothing of that sort. Perhaps we have once a year where people can bring these things over, but I think you have to look at the causes of what will improve safety. And I think, again, the town, it's not, it's not the right time as, to buy more things. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to address why we are not using, why we don't utilize the Fire Academy space?
Well, the Fire Academy, it sounds like a great resource, but the runtime to the Fire Academy, wrong, chief?
Yeah, that's, that's actually on the furthest end of our runtimes. It's going to be at least six minutes running from there. What I can say about the Fire Academy, the Fire Marshal and his folks are a great partner, a great ally. We do go down there and occasionally use that facility at night to do some training. They let us use the burn building. They let us use the tower. They also run classes for us. And one of the things on, on the Fire Academy, you have to remember, is all the equipment that's down there every day is being used. They run all kinds of training classes there, morning, noon, and night, and I've been there. They're, they're an incredible ally. You know, we were talking about, we had actually had a chief's meeting today, and we were talking about the high quality of rapid intervention training that we receive down there, but those resources are tied up. They're not available because they have, you know, they're there for training all our firefighters across, across the state in various, you know, training areas. And as far as the ambulance goes, I know you, you had mentioned something better with surrounding towns. The towns of Stowe, Boxborough, Bolton, Maynard, well, and Harvard, each one of those towns has one ambulance, okay? And what we do all the time, every day, we're running mutual aid for each other. If we go out to a medical, we have another medical, Maynard's coming in, Boxborough's coming in. We do that, Bolton's coming in. We're, we're trading ambulants and EMS services all the time. It's a great system, and it works well.
All right. Thank you. Over here.
George Clark, 20 Crescent Street in Stowe. I think it's clear that the fire department needs more space and better space, but I'm asking people to vote no in this article because I think expanding at the current location is the wrong thing to do, and there are four reasons why I think that. One is simply the size of the lot. Earlier this year, there was discussion about where to put a radio antenna on the lot, and that's basically shoehorned into the space on the edge next to residential property. And we said that there's space to expand perhaps into the basement of a new fire station. We haven't proven that we're going to be able to get beneath the ledge to build that basement. And also, there could conceivably be new technologies in the next 25, 30 years where you actually need land in order to serve the fire department's needs. If you build out to the limits of this property, there won't be a way to expand in the future. Second, I mean, we've talked about that the transition from the 1970s fire department today has been a big one, and essentially, it's become an industrial activity, hazardous gases on the property and other hazards, which I don't think in a larger space is going to be really compatible with the residential use of that neighborhood. You said you don't want the Pompo site because it would have created a mixed-use space with children, but you're still getting that with kids coming down from Hale School and Center School, down Hartley Road to the library or to their homes or what have you. So, I don't think that concern is resolved with the, the current location. And furthermore, this plan is proposing to add ambulance traffic on Hartley Road, which can create additional hazard with school buses going up and down there and also with children passing by. So, those are my thoughts. Chief, I love the fire department, but I don't think expanding at the current site is, is the best idea. Thanks.
Okay, can we—
I'll just address a couple of those points. We recognize the site is tight, but we are confident after working for several months that the proposed station will meet the fire department's needs now and in the future. We also are very sensitive. We heard comments tonight about spend, not spending more money, so that if we were to build on a new site, a large site, we would have to acquire that site, and we just didn't feel that we could add that cost to this project. And also, there wouldn't be a site that is centrally located that would be large enough at Stowe. So, this is, we think the best— So this is, we think, the best compromise without driving the price up through the ceiling.
All right, over here?
Yeah, Bob Glorioso, 70 Virtual Road. I don't know how many people realize it, but the emergency coordination of the town in an emergency is done by our fire chief. And the town has no emergency operations center, basically. It's marginal between the police department and the fire department. At the fire department, there's very little space. I happen to be the amateur radio emergency services coordinator acting right now, and we were working hard during the hurricane time. We have spot, the chief's given us a little corner. We can put one emergency communications operator. The other one was going to be in my vehicle parked outside. We don't have any room. It's that tight over there. We have a problem that we really need to solve. The building is really a disaster and really needs to be leveled as soon as possible.
Over here?
Karen Benoit, 15 O'Connell Way. I'm just confirming that the new construction would include a well for just the fires department? Would that be correct?
Yes, we're looking at a well. We're also looking at an option maybe of being able to tie into the school. But yes, one of the things we need to do is to get water to the building. The water, you know, there's several buildings that are tied into the well at the town building. And the water coming in is not adequate. Our firefighters can't, cannot take showers at the station because of the quality of the water. We use bottled water for drinking, we use, you know, for cooking. But we need to be able to secure potable water solution for the station and that is incorporated into the price.
That's great. I just wanted to make that point that a lot of people probably don't realize that they are there 24/7, but they actually can't, you know, drink the water or cook with it. They do use bottled water. And also, I know last year even when we lost power because the well is across the street at the town building and stuff, it's not tied to the generator. So when the power goes out, even though the fire department has the generator, they actually have no water. So other people can go home, but they can't. I remember one time, they actually had hose running from Hale School just so they had running water during the power outage.
That's correct. Over here?
Chris Spear, 42 Forest Road. Support this project. One question, though, between the time that they tear down the old building and the new one is constructed, where will you be located?
Chief? We're actually looking at a couple of options there. One, the town of, what fire departments have done in the past, you can rent, they're like big quantity, you know, and basically heated to put the apparatus in. And we would store that on site. We talked a little bit maybe about going down to Pompo on a temporary basis, living quarters there. We did include that into the price of the construction. That's actually, that's 7.2 million.
Great, thank you.
Okay, over here?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Cohen, 102 Hudson Road. I also service the state Fire Marshal. So in regard to our facility, first, I thank the chief for his wonderful comments. I treasure the relationship that we have with the department. We are a customer, just like all of you, of the services of the Stowe Fire Department, and they serve us very well. The key to our operation is that it is a seven-by-24 operation within the facility. And it would not be appropriate for our apparatus to be made available to service the Stowe Fire Department in time of emergency. However, the real question, the real answer, I should say, as the chief indicated, it's response time. Other than the fact of having early warning and smoke detectors in your home, the best you have is the time that the fire department can get there to do what they need to do, whether it be a medical emergency or whether it be a fire. So consideration of not only design, but placement of fire stations within a community in reducing response time to the four corners of the community are extremely important. And it seems like this committee has done its job to identify the best location for the town of Stowe to operate a single fire department facility. I'll end by saying, there's probably no one else in this state that's been in as many fire stations across the state as I have. And Stowe needs a new fire station. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, over here?
Hi, Wendy Bachman, 28 Lowell Drive. Similar to Mr. Spear's question just ahead of me, you'll be needing to operate ambulances and fire engines from an alternate location or locations during the period of demolition and construction. What is the time estimate during which you will need to have alternate locations?
Chief, do you have?
Yeah, I would, I'm envisioning, and we can check with our architect, but I'm going to guess that it'd be about one year. So that's what we anticipate that to be.
Okay, over here?
Hi, Maria Davila, 13 High Street in Stowe. One of the options that you mentioned that was declined was using Pomposidikit because of the co-location of a community center. But was it considered that it could be used if the community center was not built at the Pomposidikit school, if that was just available for the fire station?
Sure, I can answer that one for you. The biggest concern that I had really on the Pomposidikit location was, again, response time. That school is, I know it's only like a mile down the road from our existing station, but that's going to add, you know, minutes to our response times for most of the town. And two minutes doesn't sound like a lot, but two minutes for us on the fire scene is like two hours. The same thing on a medical. You know, lives can be saved within two minutes. Our goal on EMS is to have an ambulance at a location, you know, no more than four minutes, four to six minutes, have an ALS unit there within 10 to 12 minutes. So that, if you look at the location, it's just so critical for us to be there. The other thing, that also holds true on fires. When we do have fires today, fires today are burning hotter and faster than ever before. The reason for that is the new building construction, super insulation, energy-efficient windows that when those fires do start, it's so important to have the best response times we can. And a minute or two to us is huge.
Okay, so it was mostly a response time?
Yes. That's correct.
Over here, Mr. Fierce?
Also, the cost to renovate Pompo into a fire station was prohibitive. I mean, the flooring has to come out because it wasn't designed to hold, you know, 20-ton fire trucks. It was designed to hold 40-pound kids. So it wouldn't meet the seismic codes. You have to build a new superstructure inside the existing building to make it meet seismic codes. So as much as it's tempting to use empty space, it's not practical to use Pompo.
Okay, Mr. Fierce?
Yeah, Alan Fierce, Red Acre Road. I'm going to ask the green building question in a minute, but I thought it might be worthwhile to quickly review some of the questions that I asked you during the earlier forums and some of the answers you gave because I thought it was very important information for me. I can't argue with the Fire Marshal. I think you need a new station. But I had some questions like, why this year? Why can't this be postponed for a couple of years while we're dealing with perhaps some of these other issues, given that you've been operating in this terrible space and doing a terrific job of it? That's the irony here. And the answer, I think, you gave me a longer answer, but the bottom line was what Daisy indicated when she spoke earlier, which really has to do with safety, safety of your men and women that are going to be living there. And I don't really have an answer for that, and so I'll accept it. I think there is a real safety issue. The problem that still exists in my mind, and I don't have a resolution for, unlike the community center, there's going to be something there that the public can actually benefit from in ways that we don't now. That there was a space they were designing that various functions can take place. We don't have a space in town like that right now. The public benefits. Your fire crews are going to continue to have the very same response times after this station is built that we have now. We're not getting any additional fire safety. You guys are operating terrifically with the crappy station you have right now. But you have the issue of safety. It's 47 years old. I then asked, well, what about the delaying it? Can't we put it off for a couple of years? And I think it was Ross who said, take a look at the schedule. We haven't heard from the finance committee yet, but there's a schedule of our debt payments over time. And you can see that if you take the debt payments assigned to this fire station, cancel them out for two or three or four years, and then plug them in, over the next 20 years, it really doesn't make a terrific difference. I think that was your answer. Correct me if any of this is wrong. At the end of the day, I still wondered about the cost. It's 7.2 million dollars. There are people here very much concerned about the average tax bill now going over $8,000 a year. That's a real bite for a lot of people. So I asked if there isn't some wild and crazy idea to avoid some of these costs. I think the speaker earlier, when he referred to my question, said it was probably the question I asked you about, couldn't we do something about regionalizing fire services? We're not Belmont, we're not Weston. Can't we cooperate with some of the other towns around here? The answer you gave me again was response times. We have that station right there in the middle of town and it gets to people's houses very quickly. Even in a regionalized system, we're going to have to have some component of that system in Stowe and on that site or very close to it is probably the right place for it. But it's 7.2 million dollars. It's a lot of money. So now I'm coming back to my green building question. Over the long run, if I vote for this, how can you keep the cost minimized? It looks to me right now you have no particular green elements to this. Why can't we, here's my question, require the design to meet at least the Silver certification for LEED? This is an entirely new building, unlike the community center. From scratch, we can build this with insulation, with walls, with lighting, such that we would save money over the 25 or 30 years that we're going to be bonding this. What would be, would there be a problem if I filed amendment that said the design that we vote for must achieve at least LEED Silver status?
Alan, we've gone on over three minutes. I'm going to take another speaker.
Can we answer some of those questions or?
He's, he had plenty of time. If you want a question answered, you should ask it first, not make an extended statement. I'm sorry, Alan. We're going to go over here to another speaker.
Mike Kupchinsky, again, 12 Canterbury Road in Stowe. I don't want my repeated questions to be perceived as opposition to getting a new fire station because I believe we need one. My questions are mainly in terms of the, how we are going to, as Alan just said, keep the costs down. And Alan, I'm really glad you didn't ask about hybrid fire trucks. That might be coming, I guess. But my question is, I guess, for, in other terms of other methods of construction, in terms of modular and prefabricated steel, we didn't really talk, haven't talked because you're not into the design phase, but it seems like even the $400 is still pretty steep in terms of, that seems to be built on site. And again, nationwide, the probably the biggest trend is in for prefabricated steel buildings for fires and could be a third of the cost in terms of per square footage again. So I guess, I would ask if there's any information from the architects or whomever about alternative building methods.
So there've been a number of points. Let me talk about the green building. Is one is, we want to have this building designed as efficiently as possible. Making it efficient can be different than making it green. Green actually can add costs. And my understanding is that a lot of things that would make it technically a green building would add significant costs. But the final answer on that will come out, hopefully, when we get the funding for the design phase. So that we will then look at the trade-off between making it efficient and making it technically green. So that will be addressed during that part of the process. We're just not there yet. There was a question on phasing. Can we wait a few years? I'll let the chief talk about it from an operational point of view. In capital planning, we typically ask when a project comes forward, especially if they want like a new dump truck or fire truck or a new computer system or a piece of software, well, can you wait a year? Because maybe it makes sense to spread out a couple $10,000 purchases over subsequent years. But we're talking about a 25-year bonding structure. And to delay this one year or two years for two projects doesn't really make a difference. And it doesn't, again, address the issues that we need now. Everything we've heard says that our construction costs are probably the lowest they're going to be. Interest rates are the lowest they're going to be. If we wait, interest rates will go up and construction costs will go up. So I think if we wait, it will cost you more. Maybe the chief wants to talk about, from an operational point of view, what happens if we wait?
Again, the biggest thing for us, if we delay it again, is firefighter safety. You're right. You know, we are operating out of an older building. It's very tight. But part of that, and I say most of that, is representative of the professional firefighters and EMTs that are willing to do that. As firefighters, we'll do anything. We'll do whatever it takes to get our job done. That's just, you know, ingrained in us. I mean, that's how we operate. That's how we think. My concern is, as chief, the corridors in there are so tight, you know, that SCBA fill station is dangerous. We've been running that way, you know, for quite a while. And after a while, it's sort of like playing Russian roulette. Sooner or later, sooner or later, something's going to go wrong and we're going to have a firefighter injured. And that's really why I don't want to wait. You know, we put together some preliminary numbers. We figured if next year, if we didn't get it, we could go get probably around $70,000. We can upgrade the bathrooms, you know, do a couple of things. But it doesn't help me at all with any of the safety features. So that's another reason.
So we've hit a 30-minute time check. Would anyone like to come forward and make a motion to end debate?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to end debate.
Okay. A motion to end debate requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of ending debate now? All opposed? I see, one, two, three, four, five. I'm going to call it clearly in excess of two-thirds. So we will move on in the warrant. The motion to end debate passes by a two-thirds vote. Now, based on the procedural motion that was made earlier, I'm going to go forward and deal with Article Four before we take the two votes. The reason for that is in case, they're going to be moving no action, but in the unlikely event that no action fails, we want to be able to deal with that contingency. So I will take, and we're also, if we can bring up the, maybe the slides, can we take a motion on Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article Four.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion for no action on Article Four. As part of this, I believe the library committee wanted to say a few words? Tim Reed from the Library Building Committee. And I don't know if you wanted to bring up one of the slides.
Tim Reed, 137 Red Acre Road. I'm the chair of the Library Building Committee and the chair of the Library Board of Trustees. And I appreciate, Mr. Moderator, this opportunity to say a few things briefly. I'd like to start out by reading a letter. Dear Mr. Reed, I called the library Saturday and was told you were the person to whom I should write. I know the trustees get numerous complaints, compliments, and suggestions, so whether you merely add this to the pile or act on it, well, that's up to you. I am old. I still remember when libraries were quiet places for reading and getting work done. My present computer and printer are finicky and I often need the use of other equipment. My work is scientific in nature and requires concentration. The perfect solution for me is to go to the library where I can use a computer or printer and sit quietly. However, the random library is usually too noisy for this. I have complained twice, perhaps not to the right person. The last time I complained, I was told, we're not that kind of library, we're a social library. As I said, I am old and I never have heard such As I said, I am old, and I never have heard such a thing. Is this all part of the newer ways of socializing, like Facebook and speed dating? That was some months ago. I write this now because I recently visited the library one evening to quickly print a document. Sadly, the social atmosphere was still in play, and was unwelcoming to anyone needing a quiet place to get work or reading done. So for now, I will continue using the Maynard and Hudson libraries. They are and still, in fact, libraries, where friendliness and helpful service are neither loud nor noisy. In closing, Mr. Reed, I hope this suggestion will cause a reexamination of the library's environment, as well as the goals and atmosphere desired. If not, then just add this to the pile of compliments, complaints, and suggestions in the circular file, and nothing's been lost or gained, save a few minutes of my I've had other letters like this, phone calls, conversations. The library has issues that need to be addressed. It's crowded, it's cramped, we have 6,000 square feet, we're in the basement of a building, and we don't really serve all the needs of all members of the community. In addition to that, we have leaks. Monumental leaks sometimes, more minor leaks, like what happened in Sandy, when water came in to the children's library section. The Board, the Library Board of Trustees supported a warrant article last fall for $70,000 in design funds. The town meeting voted for that money, and it included a complete engineering analysis. This showed structural degradation in 1975 edition. We have metal ties holding up the patio over the entrance that have rusted completely through and need to be replaced to support the patio. The construction in 1975 edition with its two-by-four studs are rotting out in many places. I'd like to go through, just quickly, Mike, if I could, some of these slides, going from the beginning. Next slide, thank you. Go back, please. So, this is the Randall Library Building Committee. I could not have asked for a better group of people to work with. Imaginative, opinionated, hardworking. Next slide, please. Go through, one, two. So, again, we have water leaks in the building during heavy rains, water damage to the structure requires repairing the corroded metal braces, handicapped access is dangerous, it's very crowded, and there's no storage place to speak of for the library to work. Next slide. We looked into a new library, it was going to be too expensive. Next slide. We looked into moving to Pompo, and that did not prove to be a viable alternative. Next slide. The needs are what I've just said. It's just a library that works, but doesn't work terribly well, and doesn't serve all the members of the community. Next slide, please. Just as important to point out, our handicap access ramp is that ramp at the intersection of two streets. The handicap parking is down the street, and somebody in a wheelchair or the walker has to walk up the road into the intersection to get into the building. We haven't seen anybody in a wheelchair in that building in years, and it's very difficult for seniors that have walkers to get into the building. Next slide, please. We found that the 1982 building, you know, the $70,000 was very important money to spend, and it was very useful to the town to have put forth that money, because part of the design process gave us a full structural engineering diagnosis of the building. The 1892 building was in pretty good shape, but in need of some restoration and repair. The 1975 building, who was found, is past its useful life. Yeah. The, in addition, we found that no second-floor part of the building can take stacks of books. It was not structurally sound. Next slide, please. So, we looked into several alternatives, including renovating the 1975 edition to try to keep the costs lower, but that 1975 edition, structurally, would constantly need ongoing maintenance costs, and it still would not have allowed us to put books on the second floor. Next slide, please. So we came up with various designs. We have a limited space. People have asked us, "Why not build a new library, go to Pompo?" The feedback was that people want the library in the center of town. It's a very limited footprint, but we came up with what we thought were some really interesting design options to explore, to actually add space, to add functionality, to allow us to use that space. Next slide. Next slide, please. Next, next slide? Yeah. That's the old 1980, 1892 building. Next slide, next slide, next slide. All right, part of that functionality on the first floor, the main entrance would be at, do you have a laser? Yeah. The main entrance would be at ground level, so that nobody would have to worry about handicapped access. An elevator, children's section, this separate, a teen's section, this separate. Next slide, please. And then the whole second floor devoted to adults, to allow quiet workspace for, away from where the children and the teens would be. Next slide? Next slide? Next slide? Next slide. How do we compare with other communities? We have the smallest library of all of our neighbors. Smallest by far. We have functioning, 6,000 square feet, possibility of using another 2,000 square feet. Boxborough is 12,000 square feet. Harvard uses the entire old high school. Maynard is 24,000 square feet. Bolton is 16, almost 17,000 square feet. Next slide, please. How do we compare with our municipal appropriations and staffing? We have always tried to keep the lowest-cost library services to the town. This is the FY11 figures. You can see that the comparison is, we are the lowest in neighboring towns. And FTEs, number of employees, we've always tried to keep it low. We have actually an additional, we're up to about four FTEs now. Any new construction was always with the mind that we would not increase the, the number of employees at the library, beyond what we have today. Next slide, please. Looking at the Stowe population, these are the young, the children. In 2030, you can see that the population of the children that we service is going to rise slightly. Population of the adults who do most of our fiction books would be staying about the same. And the people that potentially can use the library if it's accessible to them, the ones on fixed income, our seniors, that population is increasing. Next, next. So what we came up with was a project cost of $3.7 million. We tried to, originally, it was 3.9 million, but we factored out all the furniture, because we felt, again, the lower cost, we'd use existing furniture or fundraise to supply new furniture. We found that over $70,000 qualifies for CPA funding that would cut the cost even further, and it would cost only about $75 a household. Next slide, please. Next slide? Next slide. So even though we're moving no action, these problems will not go away. We're encouraged by the number of yes votes, and we want to thank all of you who voted yes for the project at the polls last Tuesday. Moving forward, we're going to be looking for new funding sources to reduce the cost even further. We're going to continue to get community input as to what we can do in the limited space that we have, how we can keep the costs downs, down. Anyone who would like to help? We need more people, more, more boots on the ground. Please see me, I'd be glad to add you to our roster. And in the future, we will probably be returning to town meeting with revised plans, and hopefully we will have encouraged enough people to vote yes. So thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to move no action? Whoa, I'm sorry, I turned off.
Sorry about that. Is there any further discussion on the motion to move no action on Article Four? Motion for no action requires a majority vote. All in favor of no action, please raise your cards. Any opposed to no action, please raise your cards. I see a few. I'm going to call it clearly a majority in favor of no action, so no action passes by a majority vote. Now we've, we've gotten through Article Debate, and on Articles One through Four, along with a vote on no action, which passed on Articles Two and Four. Now we're going to go forward with the vote on Articles One and Three. Article One...
May I make a comment before you do that?
I'm sorry.
May I make a comment before you do that?
A comment about what?
Well, about, well, let me just say that I live on Sudbury Road, and I don't have any lights, I don't have any water, I don't have my trash picked up, but I appreciate the services that I do get, and I think that all of these projects sound absolutely great, and all of the consequences of not doing them seem dire. But let me just say, I was in Shaw's the other day, and a couple ran into a neighbor and said, "Oh, hi, haven't seen you for a while." And he said, "You're not going to see me for a long time, because I'm moving, Stowe's getting too expensive to live in." And, and I guess my question is, will that be me in a couple of years? I'm on a fixed income, my income isn't going to go up. And, you know, keep that in mind when you're doing all these projects.
I understand. We've had the debate on the Articles. Now, we're going towards a vote. So, the, we're going to do a paper ballot on these, on the two Articles. The clerk will describe the process. You're going to get a ballot with, with actually, well, three pieces of paper, one for Articles One, Three, and Four. Again, Article Four, we've already moved no action, but we will collect that.
Can I have a microphone?
That, yeah. Microphone for the clerk, please.
Okay, you're going to get, every voter is going to get a packet of the three ballots. They're color-coded. They're stapled together, keep them together, mark your ballot, and a box is going to be passed down the rows, and the tellers are going to collect them. So, and they'll be counted right up here in the stage. We're going to send one pair of tellers to the gym, because I believe it's just the checkers that are over there. So, if you don't have a pencil, we'll have pencils to pass out, but take your time, get them marked in, put it all together, and leave them all together. Okay? Any questions?
Can we use a pen or just pens?
Pen or pencil, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. Just as long as it's readable. So the tellers, you can come up and get your sections.
Could we have the, the doors closed, please? Anyone that, anyone that's standing will not get a ballot.
Okay.
And, anyone that leaves the room will not, will not be allowed back in.
The reason you have three packets, three, hold on before you move, hold on before you move. Guys, tellers? The reason there are three in here is because this was done before, there was no action. It's a packet of three. The ballot, the green one, is for the library. You can mark it if you want, you don't have to. It's not going to be counted, it's not going to affect the vote. It was just that there's 900 packets made up, and we didn't have time to peel them away. Okay? Could everybody be seated? So we did that in about a half an hour.
What's that? Yes, if people could take a seat. Oh, this is yours. Yeah. So on Article One, I should say Articles One and Three both involve borrowing. Borrowing requires a two-thirds vote. On Article One, 313 votes were cast, and I'm going to, I'm going to double-check this. 313 votes would require 209, 209 votes to pass. The votes that were cast were 189 in favor and 124 against. So Article One did not pass by the two-thirds margin. Article Three, we had a slightly different number, 315 votes were cast. 315 votes requires 210 votes to pass. 202 votes were in the affirmative, and 113 votes were in the negative. So Article Three does not pass by the required two-thirds vote. So, are you ready to take, take the next?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can move on to Article Five. Could we take a motion on Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article Five.
Is there any, is there any discussion on no action under Article Five?
No action on Article Five is the result of the votes taken several weeks ago in the two other communities that are part of the district on the science lab project. By statute, only one of, any one of the district towns to vote no renders the subsequent votes of no force in effect. So, taking a vote this evening would be of no force in effect. The decision had been made earlier by the, of Lancaster, and then Bolton as well.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion on no action under Article Five? Seeing no further debate, we will go to a vote. No action requires a majority vote, all in favor of no action. Any opposed to no action? I see one. I'm going to call that unanimous in favor of no action under Article Five. And again, that's not to disrespect any, the one or two folks that, that I saw raising their card. Do we have a motion under Article Six?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of providing building maintenance services to Pompasidicate School, including but not limited to providing heating, oil, electricity, annual fire alarm testing, labor and expenses required to maintain DEP water system certification, snow plowing, and wages for facility management until after town meeting in May 2013.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. This is for a partial year of maintenance cost for Pompo, which the town will soon take ownership of, and would represent about a $17 additional tax burden for the average taxpayer this fiscal year. It would be prudent to continue to provide minimum maintenance to the building.
Thank you. Did we have any, was anyone planning on making a presentation? I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me at the moment. If not, is there any debate on Article Six? Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. To appropriate and transfer requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion under Article Six? All opposed? I see none opposed. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion under Article Six. Article Seven, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $61,169... Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $61,169.95 from the receipts reserved for appropriation, comma, insurance reimbursements in excess of $20,000 account, for the purpose of paying for temporary tower rental and replacement of the 1960's radio tower destroyed in the Halloween 2011 nor'easter storm.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article, this amount, which represents the insurance proceeds from the destruction of the old tower, which have to go into the general fund. Combined with the $27,830 approved at the May 2012 town meeting, will fully fund both the rental of the temporary tower, as well as purchase and installation of the new replacement tower, which was knocked down in the storm last October.
Thank you. Any, any debate on the motion under Article 7? Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. This appropriation requires a majority vote, all in favor of the motion. All opposed. Seeing no opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion under Article 7. Do we have a motion for Article 8?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept an access agreement with Polty Homes of New England LLC for access easements to pedestrian trails and Town of Stowe conservation land within the Arbor Glen condominium project, recorded in Book 48083, page 475, shown on the plan entitled Access Easement Arbor Glen Condominiums in Stowe, Massachusetts, prepared for Polty Homes of New England LLC dated February 4, 2011.
We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of Article 8. There do not appear to be any issues with this easement.
Any debate on Article 8? Seeing no debate, we can proceed to a vote. Because this involves taking land, I'm going to call this as requiring a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 8, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor, so it passes. Article 9, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept a parcel of land given to the Town of Stowe by Stowe Woodlands LLC of approximately 12.714 acres on the easterly side of Edson Road, and being shown as parcel C1 on a plan of land in Stowe, Mass., prepared for SCC Associates Inc., 58 Randall Road, Stowe, Mass., by Acton Survey and Engineering of Acton, Massachusetts, dated February 3, 1998, and which plan is filed with the Middlesex Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 264 of 1998, recorded in Book 28298, page 44, as an open-space parcel, with perpetual restriction imposed on the use of the land, providing in substance that the land be kept in its natural state, and that the land shall not be built upon or developed.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any debate on the motion under Article 9? Oh, I'm sorry, Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of Article 9.
Thank you. Is there any, any further debate on the motion? Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. Again, because this involves taking land, I'm going to call this as requiring a two-thirds vote, all in favor of the motion under Article 9. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor, so the motion passes. Article 10, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a public way the following street or portion thereof, as laid out by the Board of Selectmen according to a plan on file with the town clerk, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to take the fee or easement in said street by eminent domain or otherwise, including easements for drainage, utility, or other purposes where shown on said plan or described in the order of layout. Definitive subdivision plan Derby Woods, a planned conservation development, Stowe, Massachusetts, record plan for Land West Development LLC, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, dated June 12, 2003 revised, September 19, 2003, and July 28, 2004, by Stamsky &amp; McNary Inc., recorded with Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 20 of 2005, the subdivision plan. As-built plan of Sylvan Drive for Land West Development LLC, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, by Rose Land Survey, dated April 2, 2012, and revised August 10, 2012. Subject to and together with easements and restrictions of record insofar as the same may still be enforced and applicable, the 11 easements being conveyed as written in Article 10 of the warrant. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, eminent domain, gift or otherwise, for highway purposes, the fee or lesser interests, as well as easements for drainage, utility, sidewalk, slope, and otherwise, in any lands that may be necessary for said town way, and to determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be appropriated by taxation, by appropriation from available general funds, by borrowing under provisions of Chapter 44 of the general laws, or otherwise.
We have a motion and seconded. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of Article 10. Superintendent of Streets, Mike Clayton has indicated all conditions for the acceptance of Sylvan Drive have been met.
Thank you. Is there any further debate on the article, on the motion under Article 10? Again, because this involves taking land, I'm going to call this as requiring a two-thirds vote, all in favor of the motion under Article 10. All opposed. Seeing none opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor, the motion passes. Article 11, I don't believe, I've discussed this with the Selectmen, I believe this one would be no action.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 11 concerning the town election.
Is there a second? Would the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen like to explain to anyone that doesn't have their warrant in front of them why we would want no action?
We've already had the election.
Okay. No action will require a majority vote, all in favor of no action. All, any opposed?
I'm voting 10 times.
Pardon?
I'm voting 10 times, we're not having a better election.
Okay. I'll call that passing by a majority vote. I noted a couple of against, hopefully facetiously. And finally, do we have another motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the meeting be dissolved.
Is there a second? All in favor of dissolving this meeting? Any opposed? Well, I call in favor of that motion. The meeting is dissolved.